Right. I want to go ahead and call tonight's work session to order. It will be PCC with Omic.
So, Council had asked for a variety of work sessions with agency partners and other organizations in the area.
Do you speak into the microphone?
To to get updates on what they've been doing related to council goals and kind of what's been happening throughout the year. And so tonight, PCC and Omic are supposed to be here tonight to talk to you about what they've been working on and just kind of check in. And so I think we have a couple of folks online if you want to introduce yourselves and I'll kind of let you take it from there.
Yes, good evening. Francois Wevers here. I work at the PCC Omic Training Center. I've been at PCC since about a couple of years now.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Karen Sanders and I'm the dean for Advanced and Applied Technologies and Omic is one piece in my portfolio. And I've actually been with PCC 22 years, so been around a while.
Welcome.
And so we had talked a little bit about them, bring some information about what they've been up to. And so again, I'm going to head off to them to take it.
I'm not able to share from my, the team platform here. I'm not sure if you guys need to authorize it or.
What was?
Sorry?
He wants to share his screen.
Want to share his screen.
Oh.
Francois.
Yes.
It's just Jan. Say hello.
Hi.
Hi.
You should be able to share.
I, I sent it, I sent it to Isaiah, the PDF. So if you want to maybe share it on your side.
Did you send it to someone?
Yes. I just sent it about five minutes ago to the same distribution list because I still cannot share right now. It won't allow me to share it. I don't know Karen, if you, if you, if you're able on your side, but it doesn't seem like we are able to.
No, it says only meeting organizers and presenters can share.
So Isaiah, I can't, I emailed you the PDF about 10 minutes ago. So maybe you can share it on your side and we can just. Oh, here we go. Our presenter now. Wow. Okay. Oh, I can, can you guys see this?
I can.
Alright, so basically what we're gonna, Karen and I, we're gonna cover what PCC Omic is about. And not only obviously in Columbia County, but also with the broader PCC picture. So I'm sure you guys probably know this already, but when we talk about Omic, we're talking about an ecosystem, but we do main organizations. One is Omic R and D, which is across the road where we are. They're an applied research organizations. They've been around since 2017. Then they mostly do, they have members, about 40, 45 members now. And they do applied research on mostly metal manufacturing. And they've just built a second facility just dedicated to add, to additive manufacturing. And PCC, we've been around for a year and a half now and because PCC owns some land in Columbia County and we've built a training arm to train the manufacturing workforce. So when we talk about an ecosystem, what we're trying to do is being the cement between different organizations with a common mission. I mean, so we have education partners on the top. You have industry partners, which is very critical. So some of them are local. Some of them you may recognize the Scappus, St. Helens companies, so maybe regional. But really that's key to our, to the system is to have industry partners highly engaged with us in helping us with the programs. Then we have the workforce board where we get all the funding comes for scholarships and so on, dollar training and so on. So this is key critical. And obviously government organizations. The, the, we do have a common mission between PCC Omic and Omic R and D, which is basically to support the manufacturing industry with their workforce needs. It's really about training the next generation of the manufacturing workforce. It's upskilling the workforce with the necessary training and program. So that's the joint mission that we have between the two. Now how that Omic fits into PCC overall, I let Karen cover that, that slide. It's important that you know that in the bigger context of PCC, what, what does Omic fit?
Thank you Francois. So the, the joint mission with Omic R and D is critical and PCC is also, Omic is also part of PCC. So I oversee all of the construction, transportation and advanced manufacturing training programs at PCC. And as you can see here, the training center is just one piece of this. You can see the names of all of the related departments. So there's a lot of opportunity for us to partner, not only with industry and with Omic R and D, but also with several of the programs that you see listed here. I think it's really important to mention that about a year and a half ago, PCC underwent a major reorganization and a result of that was to integrate workforce development and places like the Omic Training Center with the credit programming. So that we can take a much more integrated approach and not have basically the workforce development folks siloed and not have access to the resources of the full college.
So moving on to the offering, obviously when we started, we had to start with mostly existing programs. So there was, like I said, the summer of last year. So we have some program, the first one, which is really about promoting careers in manufacturing. As you guys may know, it's challenging to get folks interested in those careers because mostly they don't know what they are. Some of the students seems, think things are not accessible to them. They think they need degrees. And the fact of the matter is that companies are hiring with limited experience, limited education, and then they would actually pay for training. On run to manufacturing is exactly that. It was actually that, that was our first program we have for last year. A three week program where companies go talk to students about career pathways at their organization. At the same time, all the PCC programs present all the options for degrees and certificates and so on. So that's a highly successful program. That's helped again to raise awareness about careers in manufacturing for, for folks. Pre-trade program, this is also kind of similar, but except that on those you actually earn 16 credits, which are stackable. So you can decide to move on and take a welding or machining or another degree and you get, you carry on those 16 credits. And what we're hearing from employers on, because on, you kind of learning basic skills in welding, machining and PR. So you get exposed to manufacturing program and employees are telling us that somebody taking those classes, they would accept to interview them. Because that give them kind of a foundation, a basic foundation of what manufacturing careers or programs are. And they would accept at, at that point to, to look at those candidates. Then the core of what we're offering is obviously machining welding CAD. And these are the same, you can pretty much access any PCC program. They might be on different hours. They're on an open lab basis, meaning you can take one credit, you can be fully employed. We have, we had the students in that situation fully employed and decided to take one credit of a machining class. Or you could have somebody taking 15, 20 credits. So it's geared both to students and also the workforce. Mechatronics is where we added up being, being going, being a unique program to PCC Omic. And the, the plain reason is that the PCC has the mechatronic programs already geared towards the semiconductor industry. And so we felt that it was important for us to offer something that's more towards the, the traditional, I would say, traditional manufacturing environment. So these are non-credit classes, they're, they're evening classes, they're short term. This is based on employer's feedback. We actually had a group of five or six employers and we asked them what the skills they needed, the format of the class. And what we're hearing from them, they want short term. They don't, credit or non-credit is not that important. What's important is that it allows them to upscale their workforce in short-term classes that are flexible, modular. So you can decide to take one or two or three of the entire certificates. It's flexible for the employers to send their workers just for the skills they need. Then some adult basic education, that's a quick component of our program. And also we've been experimenting with some community ed classes. We had some welding on Saturday and those have been very popular. And we can also do industry certification classes type like, like first aid CPR. We actually have 30 employees of the Cascade Tissue Group based in Scappus. And we trained 30, 30 of their employees for a first aid class. So we can easily do that as well. And for companies and we actually have the Vernonia High School, Vernonia School District wanting to train about 50 to 60 of their employees in a one-day CPR classes. So as you can tell, we're trying to gear obviously traditional CT program for students, but also we're trying to get programs geared at industry for upskilling. And, and the sky is the limit here. You know, we can offer a lot of different certificates, skill-based program and so on. So we will be evolving and adding new program as we go. And then like I said, we have access to all those PCC programs. So there's no reason why we couldn't expand and have maybe some construction program or any other program that's, that are already available in the, in the PCC system. And we could have them offered at, at Omic. So what's some highlights of what we've done, I think you'd like to see this, is we have for the second year, an internship of Scappus St. Helens High Schools. We had 15, 12 students in, in an eight-week program. And they went through those three tracks, the mechatronics track at PCC Omic. And then those two, the machining one and the additive manufacturing at Omic R and D. And the intern here is not only to provide skills to the, to the students, but also what we can call the soft skills. They're able to work in team, they work on a project, they get industry mentors. And last not least, we were able to take them to those, to, to, to different company and do industry tours. And that's very critical because they see what's real, they see what manufacturing is about. And most importantly, they talk to people working there and they ask them, you know, how did you get to work at, at the Daimler or Cascade? And what they're hearing a lot is, a lot of those employees started many years ago, kind of a basic job with limited experience and sometime limited education, and they were able to grow in the company by getting upskilled. And so that kind of exposed and opened the eyes of the students and say, well, those carriers are actually for me, I can actually do that. So that's, that's, that internship as a, that, that's a key objective is to expose the students not only of the skills they can get, but also of, of career pathways in manufacturing. And we had some sponsorship, the industry is very interested in supporting these programs. And we had $15,000 worth of industry sponsorship because mostly it's a, it's a paid internship. And that's all the cost associated with the program was able to be covered thanks to company, to industry support. And last week, we had the, probably the largest manufacturing day in Oregon this year. It was already the case two years ago, it was held at Omic R and D because PCC wasn't open. And the last two years was, was kind of a virtual event because of COVID. So we had about 280 students in the building at both locations. So we had a session at Omic R and D and sessions at, at PCC. And these are pictures of students interacting with industry partners. We had about 40 industry partners. Again, similar message showing what career pathways are at their respective companies. And the fact that those jobs are accessible for the students and there's careers ready for them to, to take on. And we targeted mostly high school, but also had some middle school students. And so that was highly successful. And, and we should probably be doing these maybe once or twice a year. Potentially in the spring, because in the spring allows you to recruit students for the fall. So that was a very, very good event and, and industry partners very, very excited about talking to the students. They, the feedback that we got that the students were highly engaged, very interested in, in hearing what the companies. And there were some connections that were already made, like potentially some, some internships or some, you know, so they've had those, those contacts already. And so the more we do these, the more the, the students are, feel comfortable in, in talking to industry and then kind of helps them to, if they decide to go that route, they have some connections in, in, in local and regional companies. So, so that was really an exciting event. And kind of lastly, from my standpoint, so we, you know, this, we, it's critical for us to engage with both our industry and community partners. And so the way we do this, we have a menu of activities. There's three buckets here. The left one is really about promoting carriers in manufacturing. The middle one is to help us have curriculum and training program that's relevant to industry needs. And the one on the right is more to support our educational, either K-12 or PCC faculty with, with some equipment on externship and so on. So what you'll see for me, I have a list and then I'll, I'll engage our community or industry partners and say, we're currently working on manufacturing day. Are you interested in sponsoring a student? Or we have an internship coming up in a few couple of months. Are you interested in hosting a field trip? Or it could be what's currently interesting redesigning or machining program and are you interested in helping us? So it's very much kind of highly interactive with industry and whoever is interested, but we find that it's very, it's, we've been getting a lot of good traction and industry very interested in helping us. Community partners very interested in helping us as well. So back to that first slide, if you remember about the building the ecosystem. This is how it's working. The more we can have meaningful projects that meets the mission where industry, everybody can be engaged, we, Omic can be that, the, the, kind of the cement in the middle to make that happen. And last not least, let's talk about kind of what's next for, for, for the Omic Training Center.
So we, we have actively been looking for grant opportunities. And one of the largest, and I'm anticipating we'll hear in the next week or so, is we've put forth a Future Ready Oregon workforce proposal that focuses on modernizing our machine manufacturing curriculum in collaboration with the high schools in Columbia County and with Omic R and D and the industry partners. So I'm, I'm really hopeful that we will get that grant. Omic R and D did receive legislative earmark and we are doing, also focused on machine manufacturing, developing a virtual curriculum so that high school students are able to really experience what it's like to use these very expensive pieces of machinery without the high schools having to, to buy them. So that's, that's underway as well. We're looking at a National Science Foundation grant around manufacturing, both traditional and in the semiconductor space. And then finally, the PGA Eve Foundation reached out to us and basically said, we'd like to give you some money to really do some outreach and recruitment for your new facility. So all of those are either underway or happening. We're looking at expanding our programming. You know, the, the center has only been open a year and a half. With COVID, it's been a little bit slow and many of the things that we're offering really require in-person, hands-on experience. So I expect the next six to 18 months, we're really gonna jumpstart what we're looking at. So we're, we're exploring a pre-trades program for construction. We're also looking at expanding other PCC, sort of general education programming, like math writing, social sciences. Those are important for the folks who are pursuing their associate's degrees. And I think there might also be a partnership in there with the airport perhaps and our aviation maintenance program. We're also looking to expand community education offerings. And as Francois mentioned earlier, I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to help with short-term incumbent worker training. So we will continue to offer of course, degree programs, but I think there's a, there's a huge opportunity to do just-in-time training or scaling up of incumbent workers. So that's, that's what we have on the radar coming up in the next year, year and a half.
And if you're interested in getting connected and, and, and being on my email, you know, getting for, for, for any community or industry engagement opportunities, let me know. I'd be happy to, to send you those communications. And with that, is there any, any question?
No, I just, I have a comment. Just want to say I'm, I'm super excited about this. I'm, I'm happy to have this type of programming in our backyard. And I think that this is supports a future, I, great paying wages in our community. So I'm really excited about this.
Thank you. Yeah, we are too.
Any other comments?
To our presenters, thank you for joining us tonight. In my professional life, I work in higher education and I'm very familiar with the enrollment trends that not only our, our state, but our nation is faced with our students. What are your current enrollment totals, or I should say fulfillment for the Omic program here in Scappus?
Karen, do you want to take that?
Yeah, sure. I can take that. So first, not just, let me zoom out a little bit. So the overall enrollment at PCC and many other institutions of higher ed, as I'm sure you know, is going down. However, if you really dig down into the data, our career technical program enrollment across the college is actually up and is continuing to go up. And that includes welding, machining, programs where there are connections to really good living wage jobs. And I, I'm actually optimistic that that trend's going to continue because it, it just feels to me like the, the career technical program is something that, that students can get at Omic or at our other PCC facilities. Whereas something like reading, writing, math, social science, they have so many options these days, either virtual or in-person, that I don't know that, that enrollment will ever be as high in those traditional areas as it has been in the past. I don't have specific numbers off the top of my head, but I'm happy to send them out and, and share them with you.
I, I appreciate that explanation. And yeah, I would be very interested in knowing what the fulfillment rate is for the courses that are being offered and to also know if, if you can get this granular of information, how many of those students have a zip code in Columbia County? Is that something that you could potentially do for us?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Actually, we do, we do track that information. The, the zip code part, yeah.
Great, thank you. And then Mr. Mayor, I have another question. So I was in conversation with David Poole, your college success coach for PCC. And he had a lot of great information in regards to how we can reduce the barriers for enrollment for local students of all ages. And so I would be curious, I, I don't see that David was able to join us tonight, but is there a way that we could get more information so we can actually get that out to the community members? I heard that there were things around, if you can show that you're registered for SNAP, there, you know, there's tuition reduction opportunities there, lots of scholarship opportunities. We have a lot of community members who do have interest in the trades. And so I think that giving them information to say that we can easily transition you into this program, a local program, that will hopefully provide not only living, but family wage jobs for you in the future, is definitely what we want to be able to produce and also be a support mechanism for you to be able to get that information out. So I would highly ask that you provide that information to city council or city manager reins. Lastly, I would also like to ask, so Measure 26-224 is on the ballot coming up this November for capital construction PCC bond. I would be curious to know what of those dollars have been targeted for the expansion of the Omic programming?
Do you know Francois?
I do not. We can probably get back to you on this. Yeah.
Yeah, I would be, you know, very interested in trying to get that information to us before November 8th, if possible, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? I just wanted to say that the whole Omic, both the RD and PCC portion of it. I, I had the honor to be on the original group that went over to Sheffield to look at it and see the possibility and work with the teams to bring it to reality. And it's one of, probably one of the biggest things that I think will be, that I look back on is what the city, the county, the state, Senator Betsy Johnson and the PCC and Oregon State, Portland State, Oregon Tech and the governor's office did for Columbia County. And really looking at the future of a need not only in our county, but our state and our region, but the whole country is. Not only doing this R and D, but training the next generation
Yep.
of people to do the job. So it, I'm really happy and excited that this is here and looking forward to its growth and its future. So thank you for the information. It was good having you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
You're welcome. And, and we will get you that follow-up information. Thanks for having us.
Right. Moving on to the next item on our work session, the cycle, SIBIN restrictions, Mr. Peter Watts, I assume.
I think we're gonna, gonna. It took a group of us to kind of come up with these, so we're probably going to treat this item the same way. I, I've shared with some, I think I've shared with all of you in the past, some of the challenges that we have around these regulations. They were based off of the marijuana regulations, but it's really not a apples-to-apples comparison because the marijuana is.
Sure.
Clarifying medical marijuana or recreational, or does it count as all?
So that these regs are just the marijuana regs.
In general.
Right. As far as things like the ability to say that a facility can't be within like a thousand feet of a school or, or things of that nature. It's almost a word for word cut and paste of those regs, but the difference is because there's no taxes associated with these. A lot of kind of the regulatory scheme that it would be, you know, determined by that. I, we, it's unclear how it's going to exist. The, the other thing is that there's a lot of uncertainty about exactly how cities can regulate this. So what, what we've done is we're, we're erring on the side that yes, we can regulate it. And that if we thoughtfully pass, pass some health and safety related regulations now, that those won't go away in January. And there's certainly language in the statutory scheme that would support that kind of legal opinion and analysis. And then the, the other piece that, that we tried to look at, that we thought was important was to be able to provide people with a visual of, okay, where will these, under the current regs is, as they're being proposed, where could these facilities be located or where, where would they be prohibited? And again, the, the statutory scheme on this mirrors the marijuana in that it's up to the state to do the initial compatibility for a location. So if someone goes to the state and asks for, or they want to operate in this location, that the state would look to those local regs and make that determination. Again, though, because there is no tax and because it's the health, we're going to health authority versus the OLCC. It's unclear to me exactly how that's going to work, but it is the law right now. So I guess it will be up to them to kind of figure it out.
So I would just point out, again, working on the, under the assumption that we can do time, place, manner restrictions, we did put those together for you. It did take a group, but we do have NJ here tonight. He was going to walk you through the staff report and just explain what we're proposing. And we think there are just some pretty simple, you know, like Peter said, just about safety and keeping the community happy and functioning while these roll out if they do come to Scappus. So NJ, why don't you go ahead and just take us through the staff report? And then we'll just see if there's any general concerns or questions with what we've laid out.
Perfect. Thank you. So you'll see on the first page of the staff report, it quotes the statute in the area that it allows us to regulate time, place, manner. Area A is reasonable conditions that it can be licensed. So we quote that the Area A is reasonable conditions um that it can be licensed. So we quote that the Oregon Health Authority is the licensing body um because they are going to issue administrative rules on this. Uh number uh letter B is that uh reasonable conditions on the manner that psilocybin services are provided. Again, this is mostly going to be covered by the administrative rules that are yet to come out. Um so we're not recommending touching that too much. And we've worked with Peter to come up with that recommendation. Um C is pretty clear that hours that can be um that it can be regulated. We uh referred to our current medical marijuana language, which is uh ten AM to eight PM. So for consistency uh in that, that's what we're recommending. Letter D is uh reasonable requirements related to the public's access. So we wanted to be mindful of um people's privacy when using these services, especially because um it's a lot of the movement to get this measure passed was that um it can be helpful for things like PTSD or anxiety. So for those reasons, we wanted to make sure that people had some dignity, had some privacy when they're accessing these uh places. So uh we recommend things such as visual screening of the windows, um that it be sa- uh safely lit up so that, you know, especially in the fall as eight PM is pretty dark, that people can safely access these services um that they may need or use. And so um really just trying to promote the dignity and safety and privacy of people using these services. Um and then uh E, which we have a map to demonstrate uh what it would look like in our city, is reasonable limitations on where these might be located. Leave the exhibit as exhibit C, which shows the map. Um we're recommending that we're recommending that uh since these service centers will be uh of commercial use and commercial nature, that they only be per uh permitted in commercial zones. And additionally, again, mostly mir- uh mirroring the medical marijuana language that's already currently in our code, uh we're recommending a thousand feet away from schools, public parks, and uh childcare facilities. So you can see on the map that uh with the exclusionary bubble, um it really only leaves a bit of parcels on the north end and then a little bit more on the south end of our commercial strip in the middle. But you know, that's just the nature of the way that our parks and schools and such are set out. So that is what that is. Um and again, our medical marijuana map looks a lot like this. So what we did to put together the uh chapter, which if codified would be uh five point zero seven, is working with legal counsel, looking at an example ordinance that the city of La Grande put together that we really liked. Um and then also looking at some of the regulations in our medical marijuana um code as it is right now. So exhibit F lays out what chapter five point zero seven would look like. There's uh if you start at uh the section standards of operation, there's a few more that uh that weren't specifically covered in my summary. See. A center may not have a walk up or a drive through window. Again, this is also just to protect the privacy of people um and uh make sure that these services are being conducted in a safe and private way. So if you look at uh line G, um all storage shall be located within a permanent building and may not be located within a trailer, trailer, tent, or motor vehicle. Outdoor storage of any material associated with psilocybin service centers and the manufacturing of psilocybin products is prohibited. And then H, psilocybin service centers and the manufacturing of products use air filtration and ventilation system designed to ensure that the psilocybin related odors are confined to the premises. And then I, psilocybin service centers and businesses engaged in the manufacturing of psilocybin products must provide for secure disposal of psilocybin remnants or byproducts. Psilocybin remnants or byproducts shall not be placed within the facility's exterior refuge center. Because it takes a license from the OHA to distribute this and it's a highly regulated process, you even if you're um allowed to uh use psilocybin, you're not allowed to take it home. It's supposed to be um the state rules and the measure under the care and supervision of a licensed professional. Um and so just throwing the mushrooms in the trash would not be a way to en- uh ensure that. And you know, after the service center closes, everyone would know where to go to go get them. Um so that's why those uh three are in there just to um you know, ma- make sure that the people who are supposed to be getting uh this are getting it. And so that is the extent of the proposed regulations um as based on what we believe we can regulate with respect to time, place, manner that the statute currently adds. So I'll leave it to all of you for any thoughts or questions.
Another question. Sorry.
That's okay. I just have a question because um a lot of this, most of this has to do with the actual centers. Is there anything in the legislature in the legislation that has to do with growth? Because that's the other piece of this that is not really in.
It's it, there's so much about this that's undefined, including what it takes to get to become a licensed person, which is a hundred and twenty hours of education, um which is three weeks. But it does not say who would provide that or how it would be provided or if it needs to be accredited. I mean, it in reading, reading through the statutes in the proposed regs, it's, I I mean, it's going, I think it's going to take legislative intervention of some kind because there are literally so many unanswered questions. And again, this, these were all based off the marijuana statutes and that had a tax stream and everything else. So how the OHA is going to even roll this out, I don't think they really know either. So um as far as where it could be manufactured, um we're not sure. And it's a scheduled, I mean, it's federally scheduled and we're the first state to do this. So I that's one of the many questions.
I think just for a little context, right, we're operating in this weird place where we just don't know. And so we're we kind of came at it, one of the lenses was just trying to keep the community safe, regulate where we could safely so that those are in place as things change and shift at the baseline. We, if I'm if I'm remembering correct, we can come back, we can do more. We wanted to make sure we had a baseline to work from, everybody on same plane.
Thank you.
Well, I just read up on this. Uh it it's doesn't sound like it's a really healthy thing that we're doing here. It it says over and over again, and well, it's three different places, very similar, high potential for abuse and uh serves no legitimate medical pers- purpose. Also, uh can often lead to to violent uh behaviors. And so I'm sure they've, not the only one knows that. So I'm sure they've taken that into consideration. But I just have a real concern that we're, we got to do what we have to do, but uh that if we can limit this as much as possible, I think it's in the best interest of our our community. Because right now, we don't know where it's going to go. Another thing we don't know is if they, you know, assume they're they're mushrooms or whatever, they don't know how long that trip is going to last. And uh if they've got to close at eight, what happens there?
I mean, what I can tell you is that um they, this first was rolled out in July. And the way it was rolled out was we could do a moratorium and it would only last for two years. And then we'd have to keep authorizing moratorium after moratorium. Um you know, there's this part of the statute that we relied upon saying that we could regulate it. Unfortunately, the next section of the statute says, any regulations that we pass go away next year. So um it it I I've just, I've never seen anything like it, to be honest with you. And just trying to figure out legally, I I really feel completely unqualified to advise you on legal risk because the statutes are so internally inconsistent and there are sections that are so ambiguous I don't even know what they mean. Um and again, like the, a lot of the questions that you're raising, like, how is this manufactured? I guess we'll find out, but it's it's um it's pretty remarkable, actually.
I just want to clarify that a couple of months ago, we came together as a council and had the opportunity to make a decision to put this on the ballot for November. And as a council, we chose not to do that because previous um election had shown that it was a majority yes in our county. And then specifically in Scappus, voters were a big yes for this. Because it it didn't, because we didn't move to have anything on on the November ballot, this is kind of where we sit, right? Supporting what the voters voted for.
Right. So the voters, voters both in the county and in the city um voted in favor of this two years ago. And again, we, this was rolled out, I think, less than a month before the deadline in order to thoughtfully um put this on the ballot and even writing a ballot title, given the ambiguity ambiguity associate- associated with the proposed statutes, I think would have been really different for us to do. But yes, um the council did recognize that the voters of the city had uh voted in favor of this two years ago.
Can you go into more detail about, you are talking about a moratorium year after year or two years. Can you describe what what that means and what that would look like in Scappus?
Yeah, so i- in order for us to say there can be no facilities in the city of Scappus, we would need voter authorization to do that. That can only happen, um I believe in a general election, right? So it would be not even a primary election in May. So um in even numbered years. So it would be if if we were to prohibit it in the way that if we were to prohibit it in ways other than like, it's only allowed in this one zone and that one zone's fifteen, you know, writing it in a manner that that it would be virtually impossible for someone to locate a facility here. If we were to go, if we were to use a state scheme, voters would have to authorize a moratorium. And then they would have to reauthorize a moratorium every two years in an November election. So with the moratorium, we'd be no facilities whatsoever in the city.
So because we missed that opportunity, where do we go from here if we don't feel comfortable with the state having no sort of idea what to do? And then come January first, we're presented with someone who wants to open a business license?
Well, I I mean, I think that, I think that one of the questions is why would the state be able to say that we can't regulate an industry within the city? And so, you know, what what possible, what po- what possible legal analysis could they have that say that we can't have reasonable restrictions? And if those reasonable restrictions are safety based, time, place, manner, then how would they, how would they say you can't do that? And and I think that there's a real question as to um the constitutionality of what they've done. Again, that I think I've covered this before, but the marijuana was based off of the alcohol.
Right.
And the alcohol statutory scheme was approved by the, which was a moratorium on local taxes, um among other things, was approved by the Oregon Supreme Court. But their analysis for that case, which was was prohibition, was that the state emergency that existed was that price uniformity across all jurisdictions. So if you're buying a bottle of Slaughter vodka, whether it's for um home consumption, whether you're selling it by the shot, or whether you're a hospital using it to um treat detox tremens.
Right.
Everyone pays the same price. That's not true of the marijuana. Though I think that I don't know what would have happened if that would have been legally challenged. Um I think this is even on shakier ground than that was because if we, if if whether it's your lawyer or your city staff, if we can't even answer basic questions on how does all of this get rolled out and what does it look like? Why wouldn't we be able to say we get that the voters approve this? You know, we don't know if they voted yes because they thought a psychiatrist would be administering this, or if they voted yes because they believe that it can treat PTSD or Y. But until we get some more community conversations, we want to pause it. You know, I I think that if if we were to do that, um and a lot of other cities weren't, if you were looking to locate a facility in one of those jurisdictions, you would probably go to one that didn't regulate.
Can we make it tighter than what you've presented tonight?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, um, thank you. My uh my concerns are, first of all, it's very vague. Um and my question, one of my questions was is reasonable, fine reasonable, right? It's just very um vague. That makes me uncomfortable. Another thing is that uh you said a thousand feet from any type of like uh private schools or libraries or childcare facilities and so forth. That's less than three blocks or four blocks, thousand feet. And and also just wanted to um confirm in in um we're in it, where it says staff recommends uh centers to be licensed stor- uh prohibiting storage in motor vehicles. So basically, it says no pop ups, right? No pop up tents. Um they have to be um brick and mortar place. My other question would be, can we cap on how large those facilities can be?
Um, I mean, we can. Again, I think that we can look at the different zones where this would be allowed and we can, one of the things we had discussed it if council wanted to go with even more prescriptive than we already are, um is just limiting it within the commercial zone. And then again, looking at the map and looking at the location. And you know, there'll come a point where there might be one location or maybe two, and maybe those locations aren't available for rent. So those are the type of, those are the type of land use based um decisions that we could make in order to prescribe it.
So NJ, you're the one doing the presenting tonight. When you were looking at the structures in in specific to the language that you uh proposed this evening for us, was there any question in regard to potential service centers wanting to offer the um their clients an outdoor experience?
What do you mean, outdoor experience?
So outside of a building. Um I have sat in on the OHA's rulemaking committee sessions for this particular bill because I was very interested because I think it is pioneering and wa- a watershed moment. And that we don't have a whole lot of information, so I needed to educate myself. And from the people that I had heard uh providing public testimony, some of those of interest of opening up service centers, there was discussions about having exterior um sessions within their facility. So that could mean if they, I'm not going to say this happened, we would have the space here, but maybe they buy a couple of acres up off of uh you know, up towards Chapman and they want to open up a facility out there. They could potentially, if it's not within view, uh be able to offer it to their clients. Are, is there a way for us or from the examples that you had seen that we could create language to ensure that this is only happening in an interior space rather than not allowing it because of the dignity portion that I I really appreciate that you put forth in this is, I also want to be mindful of the others that are within the the parameter or the 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 space of those facilities, if they are ever even permitted here. And so I would say, is there language that we could potentially look into adding that would be able to ensure that it's only taking place inside buildings if that were the case?
Uh yes, I think um there's, there's a number of uh prohibitive language in here that tries to get at that. Um you know, for example, the drive, drive through or drive up windows or the walk up situations. Additionally, with no outdoor storage, the requirement that it be in a permanent structure. I think there is definitely language we can make to make that clearer. Because, you know, even if there are customers or consumers of this that want an outdoor experience, we don't want, or we, we don't want for, you know, a manufacturer or service center to open up where that is the only option for people to get this service. So yes, we can, we can look into how to make that more clear.
Great. And then my recommendation is, I appreciate that in areas that you put in the language is psilocybin service centers and the manufacturing of psilocybin products. I would also add distribution in there. So if it would be almost a listing of all of the, and you could probably go back to the medical marijuana policies that have been produced to look at all the different touchpoints so that we are listing it out extremely clearly. Because each of these have different functions. I would only think that a manufacturer would have a different function than a service center, right? And so we want to be able to call that out as what it is, as the supply chain process, if you will. Lastly, I, I know that there is a lot of, you know, questions in regard to this as a, a potential service for those that are in need of it. I would point, I've worked very closely with our veterans that have come to me and spoken to me about this particular subject matter. The VA currently has five different studies that are taking place to address depression, PTSD and other mental health conditions and how this could be a potential treatment option for those that have served for our nation and that are coming back and needing help. And so, yeah, there might be other, you know, ideas of what this will be and what it will look like. But I think that there is an actual medical necessity that is being addressed and being able to provide a service and a treatment to those that are in need of that. And so as we look at addressing mental health crisis in the United States, I, I would hope that we would come with an open mind and ensure that we are not turning our, our backs on what could potentially be something that helps or saves many of the people that are faced with mental health and traumatic issues in their, their point in life today. So thank you.
Any other comments?
I would just say that I'm definitely in favor of just tightening up the restrictions just so that we have. I mean, I, I have some concerns definitely about just the leeway there is in, in the laws and rules. So if we can tighten up more, I would, I'd be in favor of that personally.
What I'd say about that is that we can always get less restrictive as more information comes to light. My general advice on any, anything land use regulated is that it usually makes sense, if we're going to be restrictive or less restrictive, it usually makes sense to be more restrictive upfront because if you're less restrictive upfront and then it's not the outcome that you look for, then anyone that's already in is a pre-existing non-conforming use. So if, if kind of it's to desire the council to be well, acting within the statutory scheme as we understand it, more restrictive upfront, we can, can talk about some of those things and figure that out.
Counselor Polling, could I ask a couple areas that you'd like it to be tighter? Just so that when I bring back another version to you, I know what to include?
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I think that Counselor Zaski made some excellent comments when, in regards to, you know, outdoor use and some of those areas where we can be more restrictive, where we can tighten up the language and restrict. I mean, so I, I think like being, you know, in areas and also the, the use in certain, like in outdoors would be one area. But, you know, when it comes to, I mean, I think, I guess I, I just want to be able to, for us to be able to say, hey, you know, like, can we, how, how far can we really tighten this down? And restrict until we can actually know more going forward? So I don't know what else.
I'd like to see a change in the distance between public spaces and schools. I think there's a distinct difference between purchasing alcohol and purchasing marijuana rather than consuming it on the premises. And I know that we don't know how long it, you know, it, it stays in the system or the effects that it has on someone that exits the facility. But I, I would like to see a change in, in the distance to those areas.
We can, what we can do, if this would be helpful, is bring back a couple mock maps. So we could do like what 1,000 feet would look like, 1,250 feet, 1,500 feet. And then have all of those as a visual to show where it'd be allowed to help make a decision.
That would be fantastic. Do I have, sorry, I'm just curious if there's an appropriate cap?
I think I understand exactly what you guys are getting at. And so I think that what we can do is look at some reasonable regulations, map those out, figure out what those look like and bring them back. And then as OHA clarifies what we can do and hopefully as the legislature clarifies what can happen and as we learn more about the benefits and the burdens associated with the facilities, we can then take a look at this down the road and, and have a discussion about what to do.
Thank you.
Or data.
And also, can we look in the, the size of the facility? I'm just kind of guessing, if it's a commercial, it's going to be on a commercial site. Can it be, you know, if it's limited to a certain area, somebody can come and say, oh, I'm going to build a two-story, three-story facility. Can we cap it into a certain size?
I think we could say up to on a square feet. We'll come up with, we'll, we'll take a look at some of that.
And then Peter, I would say, could we also add faith-based organizations into that listing? Or would that be, because I just think of like you, you, you call out, or we call out childcare facilities. I also think that there's a big congregation of our youth in these locations. So I would just add that to the listing so that we could look at the map.
Yeah, we can absolutely add the faith-based organizations.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
But just as a reminder too, we just want to preface this by saying that we will bring all this back, but it has to go into effect before January 1st if you want to do it. Otherwise it goes in with nothing.
So that means the last meeting in November.
So.
Last meeting of November?
Yeah, it's 30 days, I believe.
Right.
Okay.
Unless you declare an emergency.
Unless you declare an emergency.
Right. So we're, the window is
Thank you.
Very small.
Very tight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Got three minutes till the meeting starts, so why don't we end the work session? I think there's direction to staff. We'll be back at seven o'clock.